Good evening, I'm Monty. It's seven o'clock, so we're going to have a call to the board. First, the motion, they've dropped the agenda for this evening. Thank you, Monty. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Gina. All those in favor? Seven up. Next, we have delegations, and they're being done. We're going to move on to routine matters, moving on to the minutes. Do you have a motion for the minutes for the regular meeting on November 4, 2019, and special meeting on November 13, 2019?
On November 13, yes.
Thank you, Ronda. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And any discussion? All those in favor? Seven up. Next, we have the clerk and treasurer's report. Do you have a motion to accept the clerk and treasurer's?
Here you go. You accept the clerk and treasurer's?
Thank you, Gina. Do I have a second?
Two.
Thank you, Monty. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven up. Next, I need a motion to accept the bills for payments. Thank you, Ronda. Do I have a second? Thank you, Patty. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven up. Next, we've got a Lincoln Elementary School presentation from Sire Petachek. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yep, Petachek. Okay. I am Sire Petachek. I am the K-6 school counselor. This is the mission statement for the LAS School Counseling Program. This was adopted kind of in the middle to end of last year, just because there wasn't one specific for Lincoln Elementary School in the past. They had a K-12 mission statement. So this is what we came up with, or I came up with, for the LAS Counseling Program mission statement there. And the mission is implemented in a variety of ways in our school. It's implemented through guidance lessons that I do with students. I do those biweekly, and they're 30 minutes. They have a variety of social, emotional, character development topics. We've just finished up a unit on conflict, so that was kind of the topic that we had currently been working on, and now we're going to move on to a new topic. Individual counseling happens daily in the counseling office, or the treehouse, as I put it out there. That's what the kids call it. If anyone knows where my office is, it's up on the stage in kind of a loft, so the kids like to call it the treehouse. I do a lot of solution-focused, brief therapy, which is all about helping students identify problems that they're currently facing, and coming up with solutions that they can reach in a certain amount of time, or kind of setting that timeline with them. Figuring out what the problem is, what's helping the problem, what's making the problem worse, what can we do more of, what can we do less of, helping them kind of have that power in their lives over problems that they're facing. Lunch bunch and small group counseling. I do that weekly with the 4th, 5th, and 6th grades. So on the weeks that we don't have the guidance, character ed lessons, I'll do a lunch bunch on Monday and Friday, as long as we have school. And then on the weeks that we do have character ed, I'll just do one on Friday. And it rotates. One day it'll be 4th grade, the next one will be 5th grade, and then the next will be 6th grade, and all 4th, 5th, and 6th graders will have a chance due to that. We usually just have a topic for that lunch that we talk about and kind of work through. And then leopard families. That's something that happens weekly. It's school-wide. I'm going to talk about that a little bit more at the end. And then lastly, the mission is implemented through collaboration and consultation. That happens usually daily with various stakeholders, like working with teachers, and administrators, and members of the community, and collaborating if there's anything we can bring in to help our students with that supports the mission as well. So, the counseling referrals. I started this process last year when I came here. I have student self-referrals. So the two pictures there at the bottom that you can see, the one on the left is an example of the self-referral that the 4th, 5th, and 6th grade students can use, and the one on the right is the example of the one that the kindergarten through 3rd grade students can use. These are available in all of their classrooms and in a folder out in the hallway. We go over it at the beginning of the year. So if there's ever anything students like to see me about, they can grab one of those and they can fill it out. And I have that box, that picture up at the top, that sits in our main hallway. It's locked with a padlock. I'm the only one who knows the combination. So they just slide them in there, and I check that daily. And if there's a student, or multiple students that have submitted those, I work them in, and we kind of go through it that way. I also have teacher and staff referrals available there. That form isn't up there. It's a little bit different. It's a little more advanced. But that's available to all teachers and staff. If they ever have a student that they'd like to refer to counseling services, I get them that form, and then they get it back to me. And then that's kind of the same as the parent referral. It's a little bit different for parents, but the same process. If they would like their student to benefit from counseling services, I'll get them that form, and they can fill it out, just so all the bases are covered there. And then I also have resources for outside mental health services available. I have a sheet that I keep in my office, and I send it to Mrs. Schmidt, and she has one too, that if there's ever a student who would need to be referred to, they have needs greater than what the school can meet, I'll meet with the parent and I'll go over that information with them, so they know that it's not a recommendation necessarily, but just resources that they can use, and talk about each one, because there's a variety of information on my pamphlet there. Here are some counseling referral statistics. So the yellow is from the 2018-2019 school year, and the tealish color is from the 2019-2020 current school year. Last year, I had more than 60 student self-referrals. Right now, as of last week on Wednesday, when I counted them up, we've had 40 student self-referrals, so I'm going to say we'll probably have more than 60 by the end of the year. We had about 12, 13 teacher-staff referrals from last year. Some of those did carry over for this year. If that student still needed services this year, they then carried over. A few have been new, so we've had about 11 of those for teacher-staff. I'm going to assume there's going to be an increase of that before the year's over. And then parent referrals have actually already increased from last year. So that kind of gives you an idea of students, staff, and parents utilizing the counseling referrals. And then time statistics. The American School Counseling Association, or ASCA, they recommend that 80% of a school counselor's time be spent in direct services with students, excuse me, and 20% of the school counselor's time be spent in indirect services with students. So direct services could be like the biweekly character education lessons, they're 30 minutes, the lunch bunches that happen once or twice weekly, 30 minutes, and then the daily collaboration and consultation with stakeholders, working with teachers, or other staff members, or parents, talking to them, and doing something that benefits the students. That's usually 20 to 30 minutes a day. And then the individual counseling also counts as a direct service. During the weeks without the character education lessons, I see around 20 to 30 students individually, and those sessions usually go for about 20 to 30 minutes. Usually depends on the students. Some might go a little less, some might go a little longer, and whatever we're working on in there, that goes into the time. And the weeks that we do have character ed, I schedule it with every classroom, so I see about 15 students individually that week, and again, they're usually 20 to 30 minutes. And then some examples of indirect services that I do as a school counselor include lesson activity planning for the character ed lessons and for our families, counseling notes, and emailing, corresponding with teachers, or outside mental health professionals, that kind of thing. And then our leopard families. This is something new that I started this year at our school. Every Wednesday for 30 minutes, we get into our school-wide families. So each family has about seven to eight students, composed of kindergarten, 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th, 6th. There's a few groups that might have two 6th graders, or two 5th graders, or larger classes, but most of them have a K through 6th grader, and then they have a family leader who's a staff member or teacher. And then some families have helpers, like there's some paras, there's some other people who come in, and are helpers for our family. Like I said, we have that school-wide involvement. It's cross-grade and cross-ages, so we have kids that might not have interacted otherwise with older or younger kids interacting during this time, and then meet with the same family every single week. And we have monthly themes that are social, emotional, character development activities. We just finished up with the month of November, and our theme for that month was gratitude. So for the first two meetings that we had on those Wednesdays, we really talked about gratitude and did some activities that supported gratitude. And then once a month, we have a family game day, where those leader brings some sort of, or designed some sort of game that they can all play together as a family. And so now we're moving into the month of December, and our theme is respect. So we're going to be doing some activities that support respect. And then each family has their own color. You can see in our picture there, those are all of our families in all of their colors with their t-shirts. They have their own names, handshakes, rules. They all came up with that stuff together at the beginning of the school year. And the kids, this has been something that they really enjoy. They're always asking, "Do we have families? Is it Wednesday yet?" Because they really enjoyed being able to get to know some people, that they went and having that support group every single week. Like I said, it's the same group that they get to meet with. Are there any questions?
So what's the biggest challenge that you...
The biggest challenge? I would say that the biggest challenge is when we have a student who does have needs that are greater than what the school can meet, or what the school counselor can meet, and offering, you know, an outside referral, and that not being met, still finding ways to help support that student every day at school, and they aren't getting that outside help, which is unfortunate, but it's still coming back, okay? What can we do to keep making sure that we help that student, which is challenging, but it's rewarding as well?
And I would just like to note, when Mrs. Petachek put up there all of her different activities for the day, that's on an actual day. There's many days that I say, "Can you see so-and-so?" At 7:45 this morning, I had already found her to say, "Can you check on and blank, blank, and blank," because they've had a difficult time coming back from this transition of long breaks. So there's students that are coming to her throughout the day.
I always say that my schedule, that's kind of like a rough estimate, because usually...
It's very fluid.
Yeah, for sure. It's open to a lot of changes, and it requires a lot of flexibility, because like she said, you know, some days, okay, this student might need to be seen right that second, so things have to be able to move and go with the flow a little bit.
What kind of questions do you get on the younger grades with the self-referrals?
Well, usually with the younger grades, it's problems or conflicts involving friends. That's probably what I see, the topic that I see the most with them, is if one of their friends said something mean to them at recess, they'll want to talk about that, go through some of that stuff. But like I said before, we just did a unit on conflict, so that kind of decreased some of those friend-to-friend referrals, because we did identify the different types of conflict, how we can escalate or de-escalate a conflict, and then ways to resolve them. So I think that's helped them, having that extra information about, okay, these are things that I need to do first before I involve a counselor or a teacher to help me resolve my conflict, which they still do sometimes, depending on what it is, but they've tried X amount of things first, which I think has been pretty helpful.
I just wanted to mention, as a school district, because I've been superintendent and administrator in several districts, and only two have had elementary counselors in the building. In place, you know, before, we shared a high school person, if we got time with a high school person, otherwise, and this staff did the best they could, so to have somebody there full-time, like you said, first thing in the morning, coming back from a break to your kiddos, and somebody that understands, can help them work the day. You just need to know that that is a matter to our students, and it's somebody that not everybody's willing to take on that issue, staffing expense, but if he feels like he can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to information highlights. Do you want to move on to the elementary school fundraising?
I'm glad to let Mrs. Schmidt brag about the board.
Well, I have the great pleasure, this last week, to wake up every morning, and the first thing I do is check my phone and look on the FlipGive app, and every day it grows and grows. See how much money we're spending. Absolutely. And, you know, if we're going to do shopping anyway, may not be paid back for your school for those shopping dollars you're using. In about seven days, we raised $246, so, and it keeps growing every day. From the time you shop to the time it's posted, it's about 24 hours, so it's usually the next day that I start seeing those, but it's been working really well, and I encourage people to keep on using it and passing it along. Also, our site council did their fall trash bag sales, and that went very well as well, and that was all profit, because last year, they had a good sense to purchase quite a bit of stock inventory. And I don't have the exact number, but I believe it was 12, in the $1,200 range. That was a positive.
That's great.
Yeah, absolutely.
So in regards to that fundraising on the internet, is that something that you can advertise, to send on to parents, or what?
We have. I put a video on the internet, on the Facebook page, through Thrill Share, and that can be shared with parents. We can send information home. It's one of those things that it's best of visual application to see, and that's why I made the video. And it really is a step-by-step, click here, click here video. It's pretty easy, okay? It was pretty easy, yeah. And I did ask for feedback, if anyone thinks the video's difficult, that, you know, we can get that out there more, that everyone can... It seems to be working well.
Okay. Thank you. We're looking at the Lincoln Elementary School, each back out there.
I tell you, the most exciting thing, once we got the heat in our condition, was the radios. Did they get the tech room, the computer lab?
The computer lab was done today, and we really pushed for that one to be done, because we start our error predictive assessments tomorrow. Yes, the computer lab was done today.
Someone else out this morning, the rooms were out, the computer lab was on the west side, and again, they've, it's been a struggle, because not all the windows are in as they need to be. If you drive by, you'll see some rooms have all their windows in, others don't, and for them to have what they need to do that west side, so the testing's not interrupted with that commotion next week, is, they did that to honor the request of the principal, so we appreciate that. And I just wanted to say, although you had payment to the contractors this week, that was the way the bill went for the subcontractors, so my guess is that was to help with, there are only two gentlemen who are putting in windows, and that's helped with those expenses. We still have $145,000 that is in the account for the project, so is it near... Anyway, it is, but, and if you notice, this week, they've been working on wrapping the big HBAC units.
And what is that doing?
And today, today when I was there, they're all finished, covering the zonage, and so that, they were out. I sent an email to ASCA to level the split units that were down in the locker room areas, because we've put a leveler on them, and they were crooked, and they were out within a day, and had, when I sent the message to them, and had that taken care of. So they've been trying to respond as, as we see things that have been questioned, and they're getting taken care of. So the dream now is that they're done by Christmas time, so...
Before we move on from that, is there any plan to put some sort of protection on the ingredients on the west side?
Not around the units, just on that deckwork.
No, I mean, because it's wide open, there's a lot of activity with parking and whatnot. It would seem some sort of pipe of concrete in them, or a family fence or something to limit access.
Or somebody running into them.
Yeah.
There's nothing built to contract that.
Right, I understand. It would be bad, and whatever, for half of them, so...
You said the dream was Christmas. What is the deadline on their contract to be complete?
There is no deadline. You know, we thought it was going to be done before Thanksgiving, so now, we've still got...
I thought there was a completion date on the contract.
No. If you drive down the street where the kindergarten building is, and if you look in that, where the additions are, the 3rd, 4th, and art, no, the 4th, 5th, and art room windows are done on that, that west side, but the east side going around that addition is not finished. And again, the conversation with Mrs. Schmidt was, it was better to get that west side window, since they have those, and get those in before we do the testing, because that state assessment gives the teachers nine seconds to work with the students in preparation for the official testing later.
And Dr. Summers, may I add, a bit to the conversation? There's a couple of factors that are coming into play. We do have a teacher that has some chemical sensitivities, and others have reported sometimes the caulking is very strong, so we've tried to push the contractors to put windows in at certain times, and then wait before the long breaks. Like on Wednesday, all they did was caulk, because we didn't have students and staff members in the building. The other issue that we run into is some of those rooms, particularly the music room, has a lot of windows, and it's hard, it's difficult to get in there right now, because they're preparing for their concert. And then we also have the hallways, which have a lot of windows, and students are always trafficking them. So there was a conversation, Dr. Summers, and I had about possibly doing those hallway windows over the Christmas break time, because we won't have students in the building. So it's been kind of a factor of playing with getting chemicals out for students, the weather, and just a variety of factors are going in there. But the two installers they've sent us are very professional, and we've all, as a staff, been very impressed with them and their willingness to work. They're hard workers, and they're very polite and professional.
And every teacher that I've talked to has said how they have, the kids will have questions, and so they'll stop what they're doing and explain the process that they're involved with the students, and not every contractor is...
Oh, good.
And so when you see a room that has only partial windows, it's because the others were not sent at the time they worked on that room.
All right, three concerts. Lincoln Junior Senior High School Basketball fundraiser.
Those, there are a couple of things. They asked if we would, if we want to consider paying for once not collected in the kids' fundraiser. And these are shirts that are worn, they're school, school gear wear, so on the ballgame day, they'll all wear the same shirt, they'll be on the bus with the same shirt. It appears that they're only going to be short about $300. This is the year, as we go through the scheduled for basketball uniforms, so we'll talk about that later, but we will be asking you to pay the $300 the kids didn't collect, so they have these shirts. They just have an L for Lincoln on them, they're just a generic in various sizes. They will be left with the school, they won't go with the students. They'll be there in the future for kids to wear on their days, so it's not a individual, individualized, it's just a variety of sizes that they order for the boys to drop the basketball.
And this is coming up as a discussion, I think, also.
Correct. So they raised all the, about $300 of what they needed for the shirts for the team.
Okay, we've got that. Next thing, we've got Lincoln Junior Senior High School FEMA shelter updates.
And asked to see the hands, have you driven by them?
Yep.
Isn't that exciting to see?
I walked inside.
Did you get to go inside? Wonderful.
I took it off, too.
You took it off?
The game is over.
I entertained the grandsons with the big crane that was there lifting the parts up. And in that week, they had it enclosed, and I don't know if they had all the roof parts on yet. They have to have it, because the crane's gone with it. And what they said to us was, "It looks like they should be done, but it will take until March to do what they need to do on the inside." So it is just, I don't know, it's just impressive. Many people have said to me, "It looks a little smaller than I thought it would be," but it is the size that is required to safely house 300 people if there is an emergency, and it will work for what your alternative diagnosis, rest of the... So just moving right along. We have construction meetings with them once a month, and they're very good at answering our questions. Mrs. Walter, is there anything about those construction meetings you'd want to add?
They're just very professional. They're very efficient. They come in, and we get the discussion going, and they answer questions, and then they move on. They're never, they're very willing to answer any of our questions. In fact, their foreman came in and talked to our shop class about work ethic and skills, job skills, and things like that, so that was really great. So they've just been really very professional group of construction workers, and even architects have been great.
It's not dependent on subject, your words.
And it's nice to have, because they're quick to answer any questions. They don't put us off, and when we go into those meetings, sometimes they've been, like, it's like they know what they're going to be asking, because they bring it up before we get to ask the question. So it's been a pleasure. But it is, it's on target, and things are going well, and now that they're inside, we won't have weather problems delaying what goes on.
I was going to say, I didn't realize or didn't pay attention when they were doing the design that matches the high school exactly. I mean, everything, that was really impressive.
And when I talked to the architect about that, he said, "That is our plan. We don't want something to look like it was added on it." I mean, that was their intention all along.
That's what I was going to say, too, that caspian was perfect match.
It is, that's impressive. Did a great job.
They spent about an hour walking around with us about colors, to trying to, the metal parts that will come along, and the things that they have to paint. I mean, they had, they were very, they let us tell them what we thought was going to be the best match. No, they didn't tell us what they thought would be.
Okay, thank you. Next, we've got Community Access Wrestling Time Change.
I just wanted you to be aware that annually during wrestling, that Community Access time is different than it is other times of the year. I didn't realize that, so I thought I'd just share that with you.
Next, we've got E-Rate Update.
We're lucky to have Brenda again. She's had seven businesses contact her about coming to do the walkthrough for the part of the E-Rate that requires a walkthrough, and then they will bid and look at what, with the help of Smokey Hill and Dana's knowledge, they put together what they need to do, and will be able to come up with the best option for the district.
Seven options?
That is good.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to 2019-2020 Wellness Committee.
Ma'am, you know, it's been a busy month. The Wellness Committee has met. That committee is made up of Mrs. Walter, Hillary Coleman, Sherry Pittler, Vicki Levine, Dennis Philbrick, Dustin Proctian, and Elizabeth Sheldon, all the key people, because in wellness, you look at food, you look at exercise, you look at what's in the schedule for the day. We will spend the time this year trying to go back and update the policy that's on the website, because it's from 1718, working with the staff, because they're the key people, the exercise people, the food people, the nurse, et cetera. But we do, by the policy, need a fourth member that's willing to be on that committee, so we don't have anybody. You're all looking at someone. So we do need somebody when we meet again, if anybody's interested in doing that, we meet after school, 3:45 to 4:35, something like that. So, but we have met, and we... So, but we have met and we have plans and are looking on it. Everybody who's there that needs to be there, that was most impressive. They take it seriously.
So I assume we'll need a board member assigned in this Wellness Committee when we realign the committee members. Okay, next we've got 2020, 21 Calendar Committee.
And again, the Calendar Committee has met a couple of different times. I kind of thought we might be close to presenting you something tonight. And as we met and put together the ideas from different schools, from different committee members, it's Ron and Ryan, Mrs. Schmidt, Ashley Farnie, Ashley Wilton, Ellen Larson. And we had the Mrs. Walter this year. She wasn't on in the past because she knows the school's things. And again, when we met the last time, she brought up a couple of things that we hadn't built into what we had. So we don't have a plan for you tonight, but maybe by January, maybe, we'll have something. Staff has been good about giving the local representatives ideas. We just started out kind of building it from last year's calendar and then we're going. So again, we need people that care deeply and want us to do the best we can with the time that we have. And they want their kids in order. So we appreciate Ronnie being here to represent you and be a part of that. So, thank you, Ronnie.
Next, we've got USD 298 Education Foundation Support.
I'm so excited. At each of your places, if you dig down, you can see a picture that you have to take home with you as you read about it, it's a paper that looks like this. You've got that. It's a family, it's a family picture. You each have one of those. You can't tell, I have to laugh with Mrs. Schmidt because you can tell who two of the people are on the ends. The principal and her colleague in the family, Mrs. School Counselor. So you'll see them in their rainbow colored shirts, tie dye, because they belong to every family. Isn't that just such a wonderful job? The foundation paid for shirts. And as soon as they were finished, the kids had them, we turned in the bill and they wrote, it had been approved, they wrote a check and Mandy took care of it and those are paid. So the foundation is really doing what you want them to do. We have a family picture. At their last meeting, they approved a book study, money for a book study book that Mrs. Schmidt had recommended. And her staff is interested in doing that book study after, like after Christmas. So again, because we didn't get the hope for healing in place, staff is very interested in having some strategies for helping students because emotional peace and what goes on. Mrs. Schmidt will tell me about it every time I meet with her. That's where they're finding the most struggles for students to have that support. The foundation did not hesitate to give the book funding for that. So they're doing what they need to do. Maybe once a month. And as we put together what we need and share with them and explain the reality of what benefit it would be to our students and our staff, they've been very good about doing what they can do. As they get their endowment in place and figure out how they're going to manage the wonderful debt that they had from the community management, let them some funding, some.
Sure appreciate it. Education and Asian Sports. Thanks for moving on. Your Homeless Community Information.
I put a page in your book folder. And the top says homeless faculty. There are a lot of things that we don't think about when it comes to students and families and homelessness. And I put a start body reporting homeless students. And a homeless student could be someone whose father said, "I can't do this anymore. I can't take them to grandma." And maybe they're nuts. Always need guardianship papers. They don't need anything. And those students can qualify for some things that help the place where they live. They can be accompanied. As you see there, number one, they can be an accompanied homeless student where their parent, for whatever reason, lost their home. And so they're doubling up with somebody maybe living in the basement. Maybe they have a bedroom that the family shares. And what we're finding is that we do have students in our community, in our school, in these categories. The other one is, you see at the top of the second column, six, unaccompanied. This would be, a company would be where the parent is with the child and they lost their home and they're, they are homeless. They're living with somebody else because they have no place else to go. The unaccompanied students are students that for various reasons, by themselves, with an uncle, with a grandparent, with somebody that in the community knows that the student needs a place to be and they just take them. So I wanted you to see what the requirements are. I have given contact with Maureen Ruhlman at KSDE as we work through some kind of supports for kids that, wondering if they meet the homeless requirements. So I just wanted you to know that as we find out about kids who need, we are following the guidelines from the state and addressing those issues. We hope helping with those.
Okay, next we have KSB Workshop Options and Annual Conference.
Just want to remind you of the opportunities that we have as board members of them, too. There's been a lot of push. And I hear good things from people that take care of this, take part in this poverty paradigm experience. And they'll see it come up at different times. We just want, I just wanted to remind you that when you get those things, if there's something that you think will help, please understand the way we support you a little better. Don't hesitate to contact the head of the board and say, "I got this information, so I need to be with the KSB partners." Gina, teaching and I, we'll be there this coming weekend and we've got things to share with you. I always find that the day with the superintendent helps me to understand better things in the state. So just wanted to remind you that it's an option training for you to understand. We want our new board members to take part in one of the upcoming new board training because it's helpful and grateful to be able to understand the complexity of the use of the board.
That's something we always pay our annual P-Ks, so we have a limited amount of training available for any work on the task. It's not a job either, but actually, so.
And they do try to be generous, really, because you don't always have to drive to people.
Yeah, I've been to some, we went to one in Korea.
Yeah. They've always tried to do things.
Yeah, which is nice. Also, we went to Brussels, which is going to, yeah.
All right, so we have Lincoln Junior Senior High School South Park and Lot, has electrical connections.
Well, when we moved the bus parking from the north of the building to put in, do the shelter, and we moved the buses to the south of the building, we don't have the electrical plug-ins. When we had that really cold spell, we could plug them in by working with Mr. Lang and Mr. Pittenberger to do something that we worked through the metal shop to get the extension out for the buses. So we did, because that's not practical if that's on the west side of the building. It's not where it needs to be. So you'll see that we asked the plumbing and what precision we put in the lines for that. So I approved it because it's what I can, $3,343, to put in three of those lines for the buses that have to be plugged in in the winter. We don't have, we have five rounds of the line. We didn't have the buses plugged in to be prepared. And so now they are on the south side of the building. Dennis worked with Mrs. Walter on the best location and they worked with Precision Electric. Jim's definitely there. They'll be working with electrical stuff and found the best place to go through the building and hook it in. So it's not going to go any break. We're causing any trouble, but we'll have our buses ready to go. So I just wanted you to know that there really was a choice.
Where the pedestal is.
Where the buses are, they will dig under the ground. So they're on that south side.
Where at, on the south side, I guess is my point.
It's on the south side, on the far west corner, where you see the buses now, when they're parked. There's always one bus pump there. I think that's the one that we own, but it's a long that.
By wrong in the building?
No, no. They dig under the ground and so it's out in the parking lot. On the edge of our property there, where the buses, when you drive by, you see them. So that's where the pedestal will be.
So just southeast of the gravel parking lot.
Yeah, southwest part of the gravel parking lot, on the south side of the, southwest. Does that make sense? Did I explain this one makes sense? No? And we started out with only two pedestals, two we hooked up. So I was glad to hear that.
I guess I was just thinking, just right on the south side of the building, you'll be out of the wind and it'll help as well. Just park right there.
And I think because of the congestion and stuff that goes on, the feeling was that that was with the staff working with them, that that was the best location in that southwest corner, away from the building.
Okay, next we've got Long Range Plan for Expenses.
I shared this with you. You'll see a new page with color. And this is something that I've done in every district that I've been, and this is an example of what I've done. You always have expenses, always. There are some things that are consistent. There are some things that are not. We know we have transportation. We know we don't have equipment. We don't have to pay $2,700 a month for copy machines. And sometimes what I have found has been helpful to us as we plan for the future is we look at one year before, then we look at the year we're in, and then we plan towards the future. You have carpet that needs to be replaced. You have tile that needs to be replaced. The list goes on. And these are the areas that I've found through the years that we always had to look at. Unexpected projects. You always have technology funding when you have one-to-one computers with the kids. There are always, there was, in your bills for this month, there were a couple of multiple thousand dollar bills for software that we have to pay annually. And what I've found is that we can put those kind of things here as you plan for the future, whether it's band equipment, knowing that you're going to do uniforms, everything. Uniforms for different sports. We know that we have textbooks that need to be adopted on a routine basis. So I put together, every place I've been, something like this so that we would know how to plan. We have vehicles that we have to purchase. Now, we have the two nice Traverses and the minivan and the old Suburban and the Impala. I mean, we have those things, but they don't last forever. There needs to be a plan for how you replace the different things. So I'm sharing this with you so that you know that as we work through the school year, it's one of the things I'm going to try to have in place so that as things change. And you can see, we've crossed out as, as we went through things, we crossed out things. They decided not to get an activity bus. The year it was there in 1819. And lo and behold, I talked to the superintendent at a meeting last week and they had their activity bus ordered. But, but when you see this.
Sometimes you have to change.
Yeah. And that's the point. And you look at what the biggest need is. We always have football helmets to repair. You know, $2,700 it cost us that year. And you can see band, band instruments. This isn't the music. It's the instruments when you run them out to kids. Sometimes there are art projects that, you know, just trying, just trying to plan. And we know that the elementary school was damaged in a hailstorm a couple of years ago and the warranty is gone. It's not valid anymore. So something like that, you see the re-whipping projects on here. So I just wanted you to know what I'll be working on so that when you have a new superintendent and when the new board members in the spring, you guys will have a little idea of what you need to be thinking about when what needs to be taken care of.
That'll be great.
Sure appreciate it.
I like it.
And the color code, Amy, I mean, it's, you can see, but like I said, I've done it everywhere I've been and it changes. It's not written in stone, but it just helps you look and know, okay, we have to spend that much every month on copy machines. And so for the year, we're talking $30,000 to know that that's what you're, what you're going to be spending each year for that.
Okay. I like it. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Superintendent's Report.
It feels so like our big annual course we go along. There's some good, well, it's good news, but it's questionable news. And you have a page in the new pages about KSBU, this is probably the first page.
Yes.
Where the estimates are a little different from what they anticipated. Well, here's the good part. We're dealing less for some things, so that could impact this for those groups. But if there is a surplus, the conversation is to go to the legislature to help with the expenses for special ed. In the, in the last paragraph there, the state law says that they're supposed to be paying 92% of the excess costs for special ed. You can see that it's dropped from 75% to 72%, they anticipate, 21, and 69% in '22. And the law says they're supposed to be paying 92%. And remember last year, every district was hit with that excess cost that took away from what you thought you were going to have for extra money this year? So that is good news, is the State Board of Education and the legislature putting together for that. So that, that is an interesting bit of information. I learned that Norma and the principals do a great job with the district website. And you're going to see now that there was a little note, because tomorrow is the special day for donations and fundraising. And she asked me and I said, "Yes, put a next tech or a next generation clause on there about people that might want to donate to the next generation funding." Because you think the last two years, we've had summer interns and those have been funded through that next generation money. And the district office helped, the young man that was here, and then he did the summer food service program. The young man that helped with all the weed whacking and the football field. I mean, just those things that have two extra bodies. So when she asked, I said, "Yes, put it on for the day." So if you see it there, you know she had permission to do that. There's also something that's gone out about the leukemia fund through an Amazon Smile. Remember, we didn't do Amazon Smile as our district, but we do have somebody that will hopefully benefit from some of that funding for family issues. So again, those kind of things we've said are okay to do because that doesn't go through our district. Like the fundraiser when I talked with, when we talked with Mrs. Schmidt and they went to forgive, it goes directly to the leukemia society. So they've given all the information. So when you see those things on the website, you know that there was a discussion about it. I don't know if you are aware that a gentleman who was... I don't know if you are aware that a gentleman who was valuable person in the district, Skip Forrest, passed away recently and we had a nice write-up was in the paper and we don't know when his service is going to be, but we will share that when we find out. It's, it sounds like a gentleman who gave so much to our community and to our students and to people that live here and understand what it takes, what it takes to make this district run and operated. So it's kind of like another step that we pass around, which is going to be interested in looking at that and maybe share that in the other. It's a, it's just a nice write-up, you would want to know if we can hear anything about. The last thing that I'll share, we're still waiting to get some additional information from the state, has just put out a new suicide tool box for teachers to have, you know, there was some tragedy in Minneapolis. So we'll be looking at that and seeing what we need to put in place in addition to what's already here. But the state is also still working on some stuff relating to baby, which you hear so much about the critical issues with that and the health hazards and so we'll be sharing more as we hear from the state what they have to share with us on that, just trying to protect our kids and trying to make sure that we give the right information out to them that will help them understand healthy living versus what might say, which is to be an answer way to spend that time. So lots going on. That's it.
Well, thank you. Moving on to the principal's report by Mrs. Schmidt, and we have her, and she's been here with you, and you'd like to add?
I would love to add two quick things. I didn't have time to put these on my report because they were done after it was submitted. On December 19th, which would be the Thursday before we leave for Christmas break, we'll have an AR reward field trip to this line of YMCA, and that's for third graders through second graders that reach their AR semester reward goals. That's paid out of the AR reward money that the teachers work and staff members work the concession stands for, so we're excited for that. And also, I had a chance to speak with Mr. Steppline today at Selvin Unified District, and it is Lincoln's turn this year to host the annual county spelling bee. Mrs. Walter and I were talking today. Because LDS has their new sound system, we would like to host it there. And we're working on a couple of dates that will be either in late January or early February. So I'll let you know as soon as we get a date for that. We're excited to host, I don't think in the past it's been hosted there, it's been at the high school. So it's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. And next we got the principal's report from Mrs. Walker. Do you have anything you'd like to add to the report? Nope. Okay, moving on to Lincoln County Commission Report, and we also have that as an event So moving right along to discussion items, restitution, dispersment, and acceptance.
We will be asking you to approve the accepted $62.85 from District Four, Wayne County as a restitution dispersment for the case numbers, so we'll just ask you to accept that.
Okay. And moving on to the youth achievement report, also GCI update, moving forward.
No, we just have to have something that, yes, we do not get their first day off. This policy, we have heard that I asked you to, but president's day holiday, it's a day holiday for staff, so we'll be asking you to accept that.
Anybody have any questions in the course of the policy? We're getting on, we're getting on to, well, 121 calendar.
It's the 30th.
So we want your John Luke Memorial.
We have a agenda of what the plaque will be, or that has been included, if you approve it, to put on the picnic table with, you know, that we've shared pictures with you of the picnic table, and we think this looks like it will be a very good addition to recognize the memorial.
Any questions?
So I asked you to accept that.
Moving right on to disposal of excess or unused district, other finished supplies.
One of the things that we have to bring this thing about, as an experienced superintendent, I'm a little sometimes frustrated because everything is not in the policy book. There's a number of policies here and policies there, and they don't always bring. We had two, because of fire marshals, and we had three movie extension cords in the shop area, and we had some students that wanted to know if they could purchase those. We also have a spotlight that has been removed at the high school that is no longer suitable for our needs and how that we dispose of it. What I would like for you to do is to give me permission, when you look at these two policies that are inherent, then the six, to post those and communicate those in the community that we will accept silvies for the extension cord and for the spotlight. And you know that I'm going to be working with staff of KSB to come up with a disposal miscellaneous items, floating policy and the DFM equipment supply sales. We'll be building to you a policy in the future that covers all that's in the policy book, so new superintendent can just go to the policy book and get the information. But tonight, I'm asking you to approve our office establishing that date for silvies to be received and then we will sell the extension cords and the spotlight to the highest bidder.
I know what we've done in the past, Mrs. Robertson, over here, that we actually posted on our UCT98 website for people who did. And I know it's not clear in this policy here, but I guess I presume we did, we didn't put anything together with that, that everything would be posted on UCT98, do you remember?
The policy that actually came up with, Dr. Betty would like that policy to be incorporated into our actual policy and-
So we have one instead of two?
Yeah.
And so, because this doesn't spell out the silvies, when I talked with Grace, she said that was sort of the process you would use, but it needs to be spelled out and it's not clear. So I want you to give me permission to list those things on the website and anyplace else, make announcements to the kids at school who are interested that we'll be accepting the silvies until X day, and then it will go to the highest bidder. And then you just know that I'll be working on some of that.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
We need to just combine. Yeah, we need to fix that.
Okay, so that's coming up as an action item in the next also. Next we look at uniform rotation cycle, and I guess that entails the conduits and the basketball balls too.
Right, we've asked you to approve that, we'll ask you to approve the $300, but this in the packet is a blue page, the backside has some work that Mrs. Walter's seen there, and the front side shows that this year, 2019, basketball uniforms were to be ordered. When I talked to the basketball coach in 2019, 20,000, 19, he said that there wasn't money, they didn't buy basketball uniforms. I would assume that was this school year that, that the boys and girls would have $3,500 each, but what it means, and there's no adoption date on here. So again, my confusion is, I did talk to Mandy, and this is what she has on the wall behind her, but I, again, I wasn't sure whether the board adopted this or what. But what I told Mr. Coach Biggs was that if indeed the intention was that this year, JV varsity basketball for girls and boys was, was approved for purchase, that needed to be done and it has to be in our hands by the end of June this school year, which is the 2019 fiscal school year. So again, and you may not, you may want me to do some more work with this, if this is what you want, I would like to see an adopted date on it, we could put board adopted the uniform rotation cycle on.
We didn't adopt this, Kathy just put this together and presented it to us, that's what we were going to do, all of those costs are underneath or were underneath-
It was our hope that we could, yeah. But we're just spending $7,000 on-
I talked to the assistant coach for girls' basketball, and she said, we need to show us. I mean, so, so if we look at the budget and if we get some cost from a vendor, so we know what we're looking at, we could say to you that this would, we could do something for, for example, Coach Biggs said today, what we need in uniforms will cost us a couple thousand dollars. Well, $2,000 is better than $3,500, but we don't know that unless we look at what we have and they make decisions about what they need. So I guess one question I would have for you, because you look at the dates on this, 2020 volleyball, they show 2019 that we're spending money on uniforms, 2020 baseball. It might be realistic for me to work with Mrs. Walter and A.D. Flynn to really come up with something that is longitudinal and not mixed in here so that we knew what was going on and bring in you again, something to adopt by the end of the year, but knowing that we'll be looking and seeing what we can do with basketball this year because it's on here. Am I making sense in the explanation of that?
Now, just to back up a little bit in regards to the fundraising for the basketball, I know in the past, I mean, both of those put basketball warm up to something that a lot of the parents purchased because they have their kid's name on it. Is that what he's talking about?
No, this is just a shirt like what you have on that the boys would all wear-
On game day.
On game day.
But we don't do that for the other activities, do we?
Well, they, they've raised all but under $300 for the need to get the shirts for the boys, so they're asking-
I know you're out for basketball.
Ten at this point, and I don't know if that included, you know, coaches' shirts, I didn't ask him that question.
And the girls doing that too, are they going to come and ask us to pay for theirs?
Girls keep their shirts, they buy one shirt for four years. Their warm-up shirt they buy.
And they buy it?
Well, they pay half, but they keep it for four years and then when they're done, it's their shirt. So they buy one shirt when they're freshmen and it stays with them until they're a senior and then they keep it.
So I guess my concern too is, they're saying that it's for a year and it stays with the school, and we have ten kids, I mean, knowing-
Well, we have 15 next year.
On the basketball tournaments, we've got kids that are six, eight, we've got kids that are five, five, you're not going to find a long-sleeve shirt that'll fit everybody.
And, and what we did in Wakanda is we found a vendor that would guarantee the shirts for two years in the future if we needed to get other sizes. So we can find a vendor that operates like that. These have no names on them, they're just, they're just strictly-
But they want these shirts and then possibly uniforms.
Which are, right, these are, these are just to wear on game days to be liked.
If there's only 10 kids and they raised all but $300, how much have they-
That's what I was just saying.
That means they're $30 shirts, or plus.
That's probably, that's probably right by the time you get-
But that means they haven't raised very much.
I don't know, depends if it's long-sleeve sweatshirts and if it's brandy and Nike or something, they're seventy, probably even on shirts.
That's true too. And Dr. Summers, did Coach Biggs say that it was just a shirt? Because I was not understanding it was a whole warm-up, pants and shirt.
No, when I talked to him today, he said it is just a shirt, just a shirt. The exact order that he gave me was this.
Wore the gamey shirts?
Pardon?
Wore the gamey shirts?
They're travel gear shirts that are to be worn on game day, and he said, we're scheduled for new uniforms this year, and they need 300, less than $300 to cover what they didn't pay as a fundraiser. There are no names on them, it just has an L on it, Lincoln, so it just, like so. So the request is, would you approve the payment of that, knowing that it would come out, whatever is spent on uniforms and that the shirts stay, they don't go with the boys at the end of the basketball season.
We don't really know how much of the full set of uniforms for basketballs is available, we know we have $3,500 available, but we don't know if the shirt was on that day.
Oh, do we have $3,500?
And, and we haven't looked at the budget, like to see how far-
We want to treat everybody equal to, and then all athletic teams.
Yeah, that's my concern is if the girls, well, then if you're going to give the boys almost $300, do you give that to us too? And then what, when, when the track wants it and baseball wants it, that's just my concern, is open up a can of worms.
Well, and again, the reason he asked was because he knew there was a shirt.
Can't wear their own shirts, they want to wear shirts over their uniforms and warm up over their team.
Well, and that's why we're asking you guys to make the decision whether or not they'll make the request.
I don't know, $300 doesn't seem like a lot of money, I don't know if the part five is coming up in our future, no, no expense, I mean, I guess-
Someone asked for it and don't have the money yet.
Shirt plate.
Yeah.
That's how much they need.
Yeah.
So anyhow, that's a nice kind of funding.
You know where, you know where I go. And I didn't, I didn't think to ask you what they raised. Is your, is your son sending shirts to you?
Not sure about shirts now.
And he hasn't come for you for money for freezing.
That's usually what happens is going to a super fundraiser.
Usually they're supposed to have a fundraiser and they don't take the money, so they come to the parents and say, hey, I can make all my money, I need a fundraiser, I need to make the rest.
Warmer gear in the past, I mean, we purchased those, they had their last.
Exactly, and you-
And you know, I've never been anywhere where they let the kids, when we purchased warmer, it wasn't at the school, St. John's or Colorado, so they left it for a warmer gear, didn't know where the boys part of here in the state, and they'd have to do it to next year.
Okay, next we got the change request number two for a new refrigerator, Lincoln pounded in the fountain in the D-Mash Center in Preston.
And this is what you indicated to the contractor that I used here, if you remove your own change owners, this is what you said, one refrigerator, it opens up, as you look through the materials there, it opens up an outlet to the food area, it's not any restaurants, it has to be a high level, and so there are two, two fountains, not refrigerated, there are simple ones to eat, and that's the cost. You see that there is, on the second page, how the mind was put together, subcontract and then what the contractor, the video, subcontractor worked, it's all put together with what we need. Again, if, the good news I can share with you is, it's what was discussed that night with the coroner's, but if you say, no, I don't want you to do it, you totally replace, I apologize. But if you say, no, I don't want you to do it, you totally waste pipelines and are in the country. So if you decide to put it in later, because in those FEMA shelters, they can't break out the concrete room at once, it's completely tested. And so the wastewater lines are in there so that it can do whatever needs to be done if you decide to add it in.
Add it in.
So we could add it in. Remember, we talked about all kinds of things, you refrigerated ones and the fancy bottled water ones, all that kind of stuff that night. And the conversation with them was we just want some single that was not in the bathrooms because that's where the water would be and then when the water's going into the bathroom and one, two restaurants and this has the drinking water having a section.
Yeah, but we have to have a water mountain out in the public.
That's why it's not. The original plant was just, if they wanted to drink, they'd have to take something to the restroom, get water out of the faucet. And you have to have a high level, you have to have two different sizes.
And as far as that estimated cost, it, I'm scared to say, but does it linger on target?
Because they haven't indicated what, I'm going to talk to them. And every meeting, every construction meeting, the street plumbing and the precision electric people are there, along with the lean's people, the contractor, the construction people that need their part of it are there. So, you know, there's, the conversation has all the parties there.
Funding wise, is this doable with the money that we've got? I mean, I think I along with the line, asked the question where it was on target.
In my opinion, I think that is the most appropriate way to do it, is just putting a sink of drinking water and you have it there when you have wrestling or when you have an emergency and it would be.
We got employees, everyone is doable.
Not back like too far here, but are we on fire at home?
They have, that is the first bill at the elementary that we've gotten in a couple of months.
Because I know we had some credits due to this.
We're supposed to have, and interestingly, he asked me the other day about, did you order through something I brought to you before? You said, no. And I think he was here that night and you said, no, we're not approving it. Not till we get, till we get done. So they told us originally that we had, but it's taken so much longer, who knows? We still have a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that was in the budget. And you've taken care of that E P M piece, you already paid that seventeen thousand dollars unexpected, but they gave us a sixty-four thousand dollar credit. So that hundred and forty-five thousand includes that sixty-four thousand dollar credit.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And next we move on to action items. Need to approve the district court on restitution, disreversment, the case number two thousand sixteen, C R zero zero two four, amount of sixty-two dollars and eighty-five cents.
All right, so move.
Thank you, David. Do you have a second?
I have a second.
And Gina on there? Any discussion? All's in favor? Seven oh. Next, we need to approve the changes to the policy, D C R I, and then number four.
I assume.
Thank you, Patty. Do you have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Rhonda. Any discussion? All's in favor? Kathy, you approved the twenty-one calendar.
I did.
Yeah. Next, we need to action to approve the sale of excess items by seen bid to the highest bidder.
I move we approve the sale of excess items.
Thank you, Deborah. Do you have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Gina. Any discussion? All's in favor? Seven oh. And next we have an action to approve payment of cost beyond the basketball uniform fundraiser. Need motion to do so. About three hundred dollars. Okay, so it fails with the lack of motion. And next we need an action to approve two thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollar change request, number two, for non-refrigerated drinking fountain in the FEMA shelter, rest.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Molly. Do you have a second? Thank you, Deborah. Any discussion? All's in favor? Six one. And next we need to execute session. How many minutes do you think? Ten minutes?
Could you approve the high school disposals as well for the year?
We motion to link in session for ten minutes for students. Rhonda, do you have a second? Thank you, Deborah. It's motion by Rhonda, second of the day, and U D two ninety-eight Board of Education link in session. Session at eight fifteen for ten minutes. With the superintendent and Mrs. Walter McHenderson, purposes of discussing matters adversely or favorably affecting student safety issues, and with the board return to open naming at eight twenty-five at the Board of Education conference room. The executive session is required to protect the privacy and interest of the students who is identifiable under coma. All's in favor? Seven oh.